Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to our city commission meeting. We're glad to have you here. And without objection, we are going to go take up some items at the end of the agenda first to accommodate some busy schedules. Item seven is a consideration of possible action to approve a resolution by the city of Harlingen approving the proposal of the Cameron appraisal district for renovation of appraisal district headquarters. Please go ahead and introduce yourselves and-
Yes, thank you. My name is Ramiro Ressa and this is-
My name is Robert Romero.
We are here representing on behalf of the Cameron appraisal district and the chief appraiser of Cameron County, Mr. Richard Molina. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Boswell and the city commission for allowing us to place our item on the agenda tonight. We are here to respectfully request that a resolution be approved tonight. This resolution concerns an item for a new building addition to be added to the existing Cameron appraisal district headquarters. Let me go ahead and go through the slide here. Currently, this is our existing Cameron appraisal district headquarters. It's approximately fifteen thousand square feet of office space. It's measures a hundred, a hundred and fifty by one hundred feet. This is the proposed new addition. Approximately two thousand square feet is what we are requesting to be added to the existing building. The measure's roughly around forty by fifty square feet or linear feet. This is the layout of the property, the building site, the existing one-story building that we currently have at this time. The proposed building would be the new addition that we are requesting to be added. This wing, this new addition would be added by this hallway that we currently show here on the layout. So it would not be abutting the existing wall. There would be some altercations here to open this area within the existing structure and then that way it could be lead through the, to the new addition. The reason we're here tonight, we had a board, a district board director meeting on October sixteenth. The board took action on this item to approve the remodeling or the construction of the new addition. We are here because as per section, Texas property tax code section six point zero five one, in the, in I will read the highlighted areas here. The board of directors of an appraisal district may purchase or lease real property and may construct improvements as necessary to establish and operate the appraisal district office or a branch appraisal office. Subsection B mentions that the acquisition or conveyance of real property or the construction or renovation of a building or other improvements by an appraisal district must be approved by the governing bodies of three-fourths of the taxi units entitled to vote. We currently have forty-two governing bodies, thirty which are entitled to vote. And of those thirty, we need three-fourths of the approval, which would put in about twenty-three of, uh, governing bodies approving this item. We met and presented a letter proposing this resolution on October twenty-third, twenty-seventeen, and met with Mr. Boswell and Mr. Dan Sedna. The reason being is if you read here, this resolution, if a governing body fails, and I'm gonna go ahead and point that out, if a gov-, if a governing body fails to act on or before that thirtieth day or fails to file this resolution with the chief appraiser on or before the tenth day after the thirtieth day, the proposal is treated as if it were disapproved by the governing body. So that's the reason why we presented the letter to the head of the governing body, which is Mr. Mayor Boswell. I'm gonna go ahead and highlight some highlights from that section. Again, the, it requires that the district's board approve the item. We need three-fourths approval of the governing bodies with voting rights. And that would be twenty-three voting governing bodies. We must present the letter to the head of the governing body. It must contain a proposed cost. The cost currently for the proposed addition is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The resolution must contain two alternative costs, which we'll headline in a moment. And it must be approved within thirty days of the presented date, which is, we presented it on October twenty-third of twenty-seventeen. The board approves the notice to proceed.
Can I interrupt you just for a minute?
Yes, yes.
And so you, you have a, you have a fund balance, you have a fund balance that exceeds six hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that's where the funding is gonna come from, correct?
That is correct.
So there's no, so there would be no assessments to the members of the appraisal district currently?
Yes, that is correct, Mayor Boswell. We do have reserves allocated-
Basically, they need to add, add on some space-
Sure.
And, and cost is predicted to be six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They have that money. Does anybody have any questions about this item?
If, if it exceeds the cost, do they have to come back?
Okay, we currently have allocated eight hundred thousand in reserves. The cost of-
Just uncover your-
That's correct.
Any overages?
That's correct.
You said you estimated cost to six hundred and fifty, so- So-
Move to approve.
Does that include improvements?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Does that include improvements of the building or six hundred and fifty thousand for a two thousand square foot building is just the construction cost?
Uh, the construction cost is only for the addition, the new addition that we're proposing to add on.
So the furniture fixtures, you think that you're gonna take out of somewhere else?
Yes, we will budget for that.
But that six fifty includes design costs, engineering costs, they would probably-
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And so it's the, it's the timeframe, the deadline, they've gotta get this through within a certain period of time according to statute. So if we have a motion, a second, any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, like sign. Okay, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Item eight is consideration of possible action on renaming the Twenty-Fifth Street hike and bike trail in honor of Meg Jordan.
Mayor, I'm gonna ask if I'd be able to step up and project this item.
Evening Mayor, City Commission. The, um, after the passing of Meg Jordan, we're trying to figure a way to, or something that we can dedicate to her in her memory. She's, you know, she's been very involved in the city, several projects, several boards and so on, so. What we were thinking about was naming the Twenty-Fifth Street hike and bike trail in her memory. And so we wanted to get with the city commission and see what, how we wanna name it. If it was gonna be as a memorial or is this gonna be Meg Jordan Trail? And so we got some costs from fast signs to modify the signs that are there now, the monument signs. And so that cost is a little bit under three thousand dollars for both signs. Changing the, the name on the monuments. And so we'll be doing both signs, one at Harrison and the other one at Riordan Drive.
For these, steel signs, plastic?
They are, the, the sign itself, it's a galvanized I-beam. And so what we'll do is we'll be replacing the letters. And so the letters will be plastic, like a vinyl. And we wanted to do them in color purple, that's her favorite color. And so we wanted to do, use the color purple for, for that, for the letters.
Were we gonna put some contrast behind that beam? Does that beam is kind of a gray color, the purple and the gray kinda?
Yeah, Dan and I were talking about that this morning and so I have a call in to, to fast signs and see if we can put something in the back to where it'll stand out when we do it. And right now, I'm not sure if y'all have seen it, but the letters are very small. And so we wanna make those a little bit larger so it'll be, you know, a little bit more pronounced. So people driving by, they can see it and notice it. And so that's what we'll be, we'll be working on. Would you approve, of course, City Commission?
So we, we have two options that we're proposing, or any other option the city council wants to come up with. The two options are the Meg Jordan Trail or the Meg Jordan Memorial Trail. So we'd like to get, determine the wishes of the commission. If and first, we wanna go ahead and rename the trail. And I'm certainly recommending that we rename the trail. I like the first one. I think the first one is appropriate. Meg was known for blazing her own trail, that's, that was her nature. And, and it also allows us to make the letters large enough to be seen even from passing by, a car passing by, so. But one of the wishes of the commission.
I'd like to make the motion that we rename the trail to the Meg Jordan Trail.
I might get to be the Meg Jordan Trail.
The Meg Jordan Trail?
The Meg Jordan Trail.
I'll accept that.
I don't wanna make this too complicated, but it's a hike and bike trail. And that "and" bike part, not everybody knows. Not all of the trails that we have around the city are for both, are they?
Most of them are.
Like it's around city lakes, can you ride your bike?
Yes.
I think a couple of months ago, maybe even a year ago, I had noticed that. People asked if they could, and so that's when some, some of the trailheads started coming up where we have a sign that says bicycles are allowed. But I, I, you know, my concern is-
It has a, there's a bicycle, there's, there's a symbol of a bicycle on the-
On the sign.
Already there, okay. So I like, I like the fewer words, but the symbolism here for me is that she, is it's a, not just a physical trail, but it was a, this kind of a spirit of the way she lived her life. And so it, it, rather than cluttering it with words like memorial or bike and, bike and, hike and bike and walk trail, you know, just call it the Meg Jordan Trail.
Do you wanna change your motion?
I'll, I'll change my motion to read the Meg Jordan Trail.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, like sign. Motion carries, alright. Fitting tribute to a great- community servant. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution supporting the protection of wildlife sanctuaries.
Mayor, may I? I, I had asked staff to prepare this resolution. I asked for a resolution that would reflect our city's commitment towards ecotourism and natural habitat. I was looking for something that would be long-lasting into the future. And a resolution generally states a position or a policy of a city. And so what you have before you is a resolution that doesn't deal with a specific item that can be misconstrued as addressing a specific policy that has no direct impact on the operation of our city. So I don't wanna address any bias to national politics at this point. Harlingen is very invested in ecotourism with the hosting of the Rio Grande Valley birding festival, combining our efforts to preserve natural habitats at Hugh Ramsey Park and the Thicket. We have guests that come from all over the world to experience what is our Rio Grande Valley. We have many acres of land all over valley set aside just to preserve what was the once, the looking field of this area. And as the resolution states, this industry impacts our local economy by four hundred and sixty-three million dollars. So this is a direct impact of the growth of our economy. So my intent is to make a statement that's not limited to a specific action, but a statement that covers all the lands set aside for preservation of natural habitat. And as the, the resolution currently states, there's a possibility that there's a current proposal that'll encroach Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge, the National Butterfly Birding Center, I mean, the Natural Butterfly Center in Mission and the Sable Palm Sanctuary in Brownsville. And these actions will have a negative impact on both the wildlife and the tourism industry of our trade area. So I'm asking that we, we look at this from this angle rather than a, a particular incident, but look at the whole preservation of natural habitat, not just along the river, but the Laguna Atascosa, all the other areas that we have set aside for natural habitat. And that's the purpose of this.
Okay.
I handed out a revised draft of the original one that was put out. I have a little bit of experience with the border wall. My family has property and I negotiated with DOJ and the US Army Corps of Engineers over, and oversaw one mile of construction of the wall. And so, and because of that, I may be a little bit biased, but I felt like it was important because the request was specific to the Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge and that we leave that in there. And so basically what I did is I took the original resolution and removed some of the, I'll call it opinion portions of it, and just condensed it down to where we were mainly concerned about the environmentally sensitive areas where the wall might be constructed, that it not impact those with wildlife or anything like that, that there are other alternatives to be. And so that's the one that I have put forward in front of you. And it does mention in the resolution itself, it says, "Therefore, be it resolved, the city of Harlingen, the city commission of Harlingen, Texas, this first day of November twenty-seventeen endorses a border security strategy on the Santa Ana National Wildlife Refuge that is minimally intrusive on natural habitat, preserving and protecting the old growth native forests from the proposed one hundred and fifty-foot clearance for fencing and lighting and preserving public access for tourists and residents who have enjoyed this natural space since its dedication in nineteen forty-three." And I felt it was important to leave that in there, the Santa Ana part, because that's what the thirty other cities in the Rio Grande Valley have addressed. And that's what the people that came to us were most concerned about. I too think that, you know, we don't need it going through Big Bend National Park and any other national park. There are places where it's appropriate, but there certainly are places where it's totally inappropriate to do it. And that's why I gave y'all the alternative. I'm, I'm easy one way or the other, but I thought it was important to include Santa Ana.
Right, and, and I do address Santa Ana in this resolution. I think my, my point is, is that by, by making it a little bit more robust, we're not just singling out one particular item that may happen and, and that we, we, our statement is, is that we are in favor of the preservation of natural habitat as a city in general. But I don't think we need to be trying to get too restrictive, because the way this reads is strictly Santa Ana. And, and the way I have it, it's, it's all areas of natural habitat that we have all over the valley. And it makes it a policy, it's the way we approach things. That's, that's the only reason I brought it up this way, rather than making it so restrictive.
I think that the fact that we have two proposals, I don't know if y'all might table in it so we can look at it a little bit, 'cause I'd like a little bit more time to study.
I have no objection to that.
Well-
Go ahead.
Let me propose. Okay, you've had in your packet, uh, the resol-, you've had a form of a resolution. You, you have that, you've had that. So we, we've all had plenty, should've had enough time to study that.
I just got this one. Yeah, that's, that's mine, I'm-
Yeah, okay, I know you just, okay, you just got Commissioner Yule, we just got Commissioner Yulehorn's. So what I, what I was, so I've, I've been able to look at both of them. Because I got this a few minutes before the, the meeting. And to me, if you added this, this one paragraph from Commissioner Yulehorn's paragraph that says, it's the, it's, it's the first full, second full whereas in his proposal. If y'all will follow along with me, where it says, "Whereas, many already constructed sections of the border wall and fencing have caused environmental damage and destruction of critically important wildlife habitat and threaten to harm or the one or species in the border region, including dozens of rare and endangered species. And these other harms would be exacerbated by construction of more border and levee walls in environmentally sensitive areas." I think that that is compatible with the, with, uh, the resolution that's already been provided to us. You don't think it is?
No, sir. No, sir, because we're, we're, again, we're, we're addressing a policy that has been taken rather than the preservation of those sanctuaries. That, that fence that's up right now, the only thing it does do, it goes around Sable Palm. That's the only thing, and it does not go through Sable Palm. It does not go through Santa Ana, it does not go through the birding center. And my, my concern is that-
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Go ahead.
What is the part of this sec-, of this whereas?
Well, it, it's-
This preamble that you don't, that you, that you oppose?
It says the border wall and fencing have caused environmental damage. And I've not seen any report that says that it's caused environmental damage.
Commissioner Yulehorn has test-, I think testified that he's seen.
Yeah, I mean, there's just some places that it shouldn't be. And it ought to be pretty easy for us to say that the Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge is one of those places.
Exactly.
And that's all we've been asked to say.
Yes, sir.
And so that's what I'm saying is, let's just say that. If somebody comes to us with something else, we can say something else or we can do a broad adoption about the wall. But all we've been asked to address is, don't build a hundred and fifty-foot wide, don't clear a hundred and fifty-foot wide area, build a wall on it and light it through the middle of the Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge. And so we're just saying, we're opposed to that.
Why don't we add the, the last whereas that's on this resolution that says, "Whereas the Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge established in forty-three, considered the jewel of the national refuge system, has more plant animal diversity." That addresses it correctly without doing any rhetoric beforehand at its opinion.
Right, but it, to me, it's the last paragraph where we gotta say that we don't want that hundred and fifty-foot wide swath through there.
I'll, I'll agree to that. I, if, you and I were talking the same language, just maybe it's French and, and-
Well, I just want it to be Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge. That's what they asked us to do. I'm just trying to fulfill what the ask is and, um-
I have no objection. Mine does say the, the Santa Ana, the Thicket and the natural preserve, but I don't have a problem injecting that one paragraph that you have on here along to the resolution.
I have mine under the, under the "Therefore, be it resolved" part, not in the fluff part.
Okay. How do we, how do we come to a, under the now, "Therefore, be it resolved"? We just add that on top of what our, our strategy of supporting preservation of natural habitats? Can we do that?
I agree, I mean, it's, it's very, I mean, it's not, it just adds a little bit to what's in the, the resolution that was in your packet.
I have no objection to adding that.
150-foot clearance, fencing and lighting. It adds that, but otherwise it says the same thing.
And it only, it only deals with Santa Ana.
How do we take these two? And we play these two? This is the same reference?
Well, okay, so Commissioner Yulehorn, you don't, you, you don't wanna allow, you don't want any other reference to any other wildlife habitats?
You can make all the references you want to the other. There's hundreds of wildlife refuges and national parks across our country. But the one that I'm trying to get to is, is that we're, we're resolving that we don't want that hundred and fifty-foot wide easement with a fence in it lit up at night going through the Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge.
Okay, well then I propose this.
You can just change the last, the resolution part to read like the last-
I propose this, that, that the, that we, that we add to the resolution that's in your packet, the last where, the last whereas in Commissioner Yulehorn's proposal and the resolution section. Can you agree to that?
I have no problem with that, yes.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna substitute the resolved, Commissioner Yulehorn's language for, for resolved, for the resolved portion that was in your packet. And we're going to add the last whereas relating to Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge. So is there a motion that we adopt the resolution with those changes? That is, that we add, "Whereas Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge established nineteen forty-three, considered the jewel of the National Wildlife Refuge, has more plant animal diversity for its size than any other refuge in North America, more than a hundred and sixty-five thousand nature tourists each year. Most of them burgers, bringing thirty-four million dollars annually. Therefore, be it resolved, City Commissioner Harlingen to this day endorse border wall strategy of Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge that may be intrusive on nat-, natural habitat, preserving and protecting old growth native forests from the proposed one hundred and fifty-foot clearance for fencing and lighting and preserving public access for tourists and residents who have enjoyed the natural space since its dedication." I need a motion. If-
So moved.
We have a motion.
I just wanna make sure we're clear. We're not gonna, we're gonna scratch my entire, let it be resolved, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and we're gonna put that on there. So just for formality, the name of the resolution should be Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge, since that's what we're resolving?
I think that's, that's what we, they asked us to do.
But there'll be no, we're just gonna call it a resolution to preserve Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge. Is that okay?
And we can't put the, you can't leave the border wall in there? I mean, that's what it is.
Well, I just don't want it misconstrued that we're not, we're, we're not resolving the border wall from-
They can read it, they can read it.
I know that, I know that.
And it says, "We're relating to a border wall fence at Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge." That's, that's what we're talking about.
I mean, I don't have an issue with that. I just wanna make sure that we're, we're being very, that's what I said the last time and we had lots of static and I'm trying to make sure we just, we're gonna stick to the, to the Wildlife Refuge.
Alright, then it, then the, then the additional change then would be to adopt the caption of your resolution?
Yes.
You, you'll amend your motion to include-
Right.
The change, caption of the resolution. That's a motion. Who's second? Do we have a second?
No.
I'll second. That we can bring into a vote.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Who's gonna read? Again, there were so many changes.
Well, okay, well, there are three changes, two, there are three changes. You have the resolution that was in your packet, okay? The, the heading is gonna change. It's gonna be this, do you have that? Do you have a copy of this?
Yeah, it's right here. Cause it's gonna be-
Heading is gonna change. It's gonna say, it's gonna be this-
Just like the original one.
This heading and not, not the one in your packet. This heading and not, not the one in your packet. And then, we're going to, and then the, we're going to add this whereas, which I read just a minute ago, and then we're going to substitute this resolved portion, okay? And, and that was the motion, and that was the second, so, the two proponents of the competing resolutions have agreed...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
To a compromise, which I believe is in this, is, is very good.
We'll even shake hands on it.
We have a compromise on this.
Thank you for being the arbitrator.
All right. Is there any other, so is there, are there any other questions or any other discussion? All right, there being none, is there, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, I think this is a very good thing to adopt this resolution. I appreciate everybody's cooperation and the spirit in which everybody cooperated. Thank you. All right, we're gonna go then to Item 11, Executive Session Items, which are A for Sub, Chapter 551, Subchapter D, BTCA Government Code, Sections 5 to 1.087, 0871, and 0872 regarding commercial financial information with the city in conducting economic development negotiations that are discussed or delivering financial other incentives with ULA, seek legal advice or city attorney.
Proclamation.
Proclamation. Okay.
Item one. Just go ahead.
All right, well, we'll go to item one then, we have a proclamation proclaiming Hugo de la Cruz Day, so, Mr. De la Cruz is not here for his son, Mr. De la Cruz Jr., please come up. Uh... Uh... Who was Hugo de la Cruz, was born in Guayaquil, in Mexico, February 13, 1945, married to Lauteca de la Cruz, had three daughters, two sons, grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Whereas in 1963, his radio career as a DJ in Camargo, Mexico, July 11, 67, made TV AM radio, with his first type of band, Hurricane Hula, on September 12, 1967. Whereas in 1974, he led a humanitarian effort with city and county officials to gather food, water, and hygiene products for people affected by Hurricane TT in Honduras and Honduras, and company five shrimp boats used for transporting the supplies from the port Brownsville to Honduras and reported to KGBT Radio via landline. Whereas in 1975, started a football scoreboard radio show, recognized by ESPN as the number one show in the nation. The show highlighted local high school teams and announced the scores. Listeners were drawn in by a fake crying or man laughing in the show, it's been a success and tradition of local high school football until this day. Whereas in 1988, he started a show called Connecting with Community, for listeners to express concerns about street conditions, litter, local officials, and other items of interest. The show was shown as Biora, Costeza, and Pina, and was an instant success. Whereas Mr. De la Cruz was a program director for KBT Radio, and assisted in a variety of radio programs for St. Jude Children's Hospital, while citizens opened their hearts and donated millions of dollars for cancer research. He had listened to his colleagues for decades, assisted people in need, guiding them through bureaucratic channels, and giving them a day of hope. Whereas he conducts a radio show for Super Panal 12.1 FM called the Vallenegos, My Valley, My Voice, dedicated to the Rio Grande Valley people to voice their concerns and opinions. Also known as Mr. Ni Pu Ni Pa, meaning zero, still leading the tradition of football for 420, on Super Panal 12.1 FM, on Friday nights, 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Whereas he's been a deacon in the Catholic Church for 25 years, and works for the Bible in Brownsville, currently a deacon at the Menjo's Catholic Church in Donna, now therefore active responsible in the American City of Harlingen. On behalf of the City Commission and citizens, I express my sincere gratitude to Mr. Hugo de la Cruz for his distinguished services in broadcasting. Hereby proclaim November 15, as Hugo de la Cruz Day, and the City of Harlingen call on all citizens to recognize this special day and congratulate Mr. Hugo de la Cruz as a friend of Harlingen for his many accomplishments in the field of broadcasting. So, congratulations, Hugo de la Cruz.
I'd like to, first of all, City Commission, City Manager, Alenda, thank you so much, Mayor. My dad chose Harlingen as, as the beginning of his American dream, and he, he's been the rock for our family for a long time, I'm his biggest fan. And, and having said that, I mean, what he did, being the rock for the family, he was also a rock for the community. He dedicated all his life to the community. It kept people like, like the City Commissioners and yourself in check, because if somebody had an issue with, with city potholes, whatever issues they were, they were gonna call KGBT, they were gonna call Costeza, and they were gonna, and he was, he would always, or he's still till today gives people the opportunity to voice their opinion, and that's so, so important. And I did wanna say that, that as, 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 one of his biggest accomplishments, and it's not easier, and it should be, you know, is the fact that being here in the United States and taking the United States as its home, he fought, worked really hard to become an American citizen. And I remember very, very, pretty much, because I, I was the one that helped him with the study, he would not take the test in Spanish, he took it in English, because that was the American language, and he passed. And he became an American citizen, so now he got his dual citizenship, and he brags about it all the time. But, you know, with that said, he loves, he loves what he does, he loves the community, and thank you so much for, for this recognition. I'd also like to invite all of you all, thank you, Mr. Sanchez, also, because they're actually gonna have an event on November 15 at the Casa de Amistad, you all are all welcome to attend. This will be starting at 7 o'clock, and it'll be an opportunity for him to be here, and you all to say hi if you haven't seen him in a long time, because, like I said, I grew up here, actually, right outside these doors, I grew up here, and, and, you know, Harlingen was the place where he began his American dream. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Back to item 11, that's it, 11, second, A, Consultation with our Attorney regarding economic development negotiations, and B, Personnel, Deloration Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 5, 51.0, is for deliberate employment evaluation and assignment of duties of the City Manager, C, the City Auditor, and D, the City Attorney, these are annual evaluations. So, ladies and gentlemen, right now, we're gonna go into executive session and talk with our attorney and handle some personnel issues, and as soon as we're done with that, we'll be back out and conclude the rest of the items on the agenda. Thank you. Okay, we're out of executive session at 7:38, and we're gonna go back to the agenda, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 19, 2017. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Okay, we're gonna take up, on the consent agenda item, I'm gonna remove item 3B and take up items 3A, C, D, and E, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We'll come back to B, I filed an affidavit on that one, come back to B at the end of the meeting. Item 12, consideration of possible action on items 11, B through D is discussed in Is there a motion to, take action with regard to compensation, it's discussed in executive session?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Okay, item four, consideration of possible action, authorize the mayor on behalf of the City of Harlingen to secure grant fund $61,693.80 made available through the Office of the Governor of Criminal Justice Division under the Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant Program. Is there a motion? Or do you wanna, we're gonna present that?
Just if there's any questions, I know the, one that usually comes up is about the match, there is no cash match on this grant, this is a...
This should be an easy one, it's not cash match.
No cash match?
No cash match, it is a, for rifle-resistant body armor that we're using out for our SWAT team, their current vests are all like fired, and a couple of them actually coming apart, they're using recycled vests right now.
I'm watching for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item five, consideration and possible action to approve the renewal of the lease agreement between the City of Harlingen and Marina Trevino for the rental parking spaces from the city parking lot located at the southeast corner of Jefferson Avenue and First Street, bearing legal description of blocks 1 through 7, block 26, Harlingen Road, and Channel Sign. Rodrigo.
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, thank you, this is a renewal of a SUP that was previously approved last year in June 2016, and it was approved with a renewal every year for the next four years. Nothing has changed, function's the same, it's still an event center, it's still working, still the same 13 spots that are, that are still available. We run it out, no other department has any issues with this. Staff recommends approval, unless you have any other questions.
Motion to approve? Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item six, consideration and take action to declare three 2009 Ford F-750 brush trucks as surplus property and authorize the city staff to accept a $10,000 trade-in value per unit for the purchase of three new replacement units from Doggett Freetile or Farah, Texas.
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon, we are in the process, through the Public Works Department, of replace equipment as budgeted under the 2017, 2018 fiscal year budget. We have three vehicles that have been offered a replacement value or traded value of $10,000, these vehicles, or trucks, actually, or brush trucks used in the debris collection and brush collection in the operation of Public Works. So we are coming before you to authorize us by declaring this, these three pieces of equipment, they're units, 209 and its unit 212, instead of 206, your agenda shows 206, and the third unit is unit 215 that are being requested to be declared surplus, so that we can then trade them in.
Typically, we get about $4,000 when we auction them off, so this is a much better deal, bringing the price down.
That's what I was gonna ask, we normally get to auction these?
Yes. So, trading them in, bringing $10,000 apiece as opposed to about $4,000, it helps us save some money on purchase.
And I notice we're using Doggett, and so, we're using a local, what I would consider a valley vendor?
Yes, or they have an office in Farah, and it is priced through the by-board cooperative purchasing.
Answer the question.
Okay.
Motion for approval, Mayor?
Got a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, we've covered seven, eight, and nine, and then we're gonna go to item 10, Board Appointments, is there, are there any board appointments? Any board appointments? We have one.
Yes, Jerry Wayne Lowery has resigned from the Harlingen Proud Advisory Board, and I would like to nominate Steve Wilder to the Harlingen Proud Advisory Board.
Okay, any others? Is there a motion to approve board appointments?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, so we're done with the executive session items, item 13, Citizen Communication?
None.
We have none, and so, the mayor proponent will have to go back to the item that we didn't take up under the consent agenda.
3B.
Yeah, 3B, and I'm going to, and so, I'm gonna excuse myself. Thank you, good night.
Please note that the mayor has left the room. We will now take 3B, a second and final reading to approve and adopt an ordinance to rezone from Neighborhood Services NS District to General Retail GR District for Lot 1, Block 4, Coronado Acres subdivision, located at 720 North Sunshine Strip, applicant particularly all, First Community Bank.
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. There being no other business, then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here.